Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Show my pars and shit. I'd like to welcome you all to the Village of New Paltz Planning Board Meeting. Today is November 5th, 2013. It's now 7:02 and 7:03, and I'm calling the meeting to order. We have with us tonight four members: Rich Stephens, John Litten, and Liz Harshout, and I count as a member also. Michael Ziller is absent tonight, he's doing some election duties. Our attorney is George Rotenhause of Port Myers, and our village clerk, Catherine Doyle Bunker, is taking our minutes this evening. A brief agenda. The first item is our number PB1304, and it's a proposed subdivision of Mr. Niffen's property at 15 Millbrook Road. Is it correct that I called it your property? And it's an application for subdivision and approval, and it's in zoning district R1, we knew that. Okay. Floyd, why don't you come up and we'll talk about your latest submission? Would you like to give us a brief summary of the assembly motion?
Our last meeting, several issues came up. First being that I complete the new EAF form-
Right.
-which I submitted with this application.
Yes.
Also that I overlay the essential area from the town's draft concept map for the Millbrook Preserve, which I did on the map. Third was to show future trail connections, one by the pump station and one more towards my house. I was also waiting to hear from Mike, but I haven't heard anything from him, more specifically on where they wanted the trail heads.
Okay.
Fourth is show the development areas on the lots, so I did show the proposed locations for the houses and the wells. Also showed the common driveway, the shared stair. There was also request to move the lot lines more towards the edge of the essential area, which I did. Not completely, but some areas are outside of it, and there's just a small area that's inside of it, in the top corner of the property. And then lastly, to show contour lines.
And I sent Floyd a copy of George's memo, so that he could look and address the items that were still needed to be addressed. Can you address them?
Yeah, sure. I read through it once, but I-
Take your time.
So I guess as it relates to me... So I guess the second paragraph talks about submitting to the village engineer and PDW superintendent?
Right.
I'm assuming that the planning board's handling that part of it? Or should I?
Well, the planning board should resolve to do that tonight. It's mandatory in zoning law, subdivision.
And does it remain the applicant's responsibility to do it?
No, it's your responsibility-
Okay.
-through Katie, I guess.
Right.
Now, I did submit 10 copies to the Senate. Were there leftovers from that that can be forwarded, or do you need two more?
I think we have enough, because we have five, and one for George, or six. And we need at least two down there, so we can get two away. Yeah.
Next paragraph talks about-
They need to do that so that they know they need to respond to you.
So that the-
So that the village engineer-
Right.
-and the PDW superintendent know to respond to you with recommendations, comments, whatever they may be.
Right, for the public hearing, to have it for the public hearing?
Right. So when Katie sends it, it should be with a note, please, this is being sent for referral for your comments to the planning board.
Okay Floyd, sorry.
Sure. So the next paragraph speaks to the-
The public hearing.
Holding the public hearing.
Right. And Katie will hear Floyd or coordinate with someone downstairs to get Floyd the information?
That would be the list of people to mail to and the sign.
Yeah. Now George also mentioned how many signs he would need, which is a little excessive, I would imagine, especially since the amount of traffic you get there, but I don't know how to determine what a reasonable number of signs would be.
If you're within 25 feet of each property line having a frontage on the road, so I think you only, if you kind of look out here, don't you only have frontage on one road?
On Henry W. DeBois, yeah.
Correct. Seating one sign on that road.
In 20- each property line, sure.
And one on Mill-
Okay.
On Mill- well-
Millbrook and Henry W. Millbrook is here, is here.
Sorry, I do front on the end of the road.
Okay, so one on each road.
Okay.
So you need two signs. Two signs.
We'll print these, but she'll remain meaningless right this second, it's very good by any means for her.
But as a keyword.
Sure.
Okay, so the rest of it is the interesting part.
So yeah, so some details are missing. The seal and number, which I can have on the next map that I-
All right.
Contours. I acknowledge they were faint, we were trying to overlay a lot of information, so.
Did you get the hard copy to-
Yeah, I did.
And you couldn't read the, I couldn't read either, right?
I wanted to read it because that was a discussion last week.
Yeah.
And I see them, but I can't see what they are.
Right.
They, I couldn't find, I couldn't read the numbers on them, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I think every 10 feet it'll give a number. Like 350 or 340.
Going this way?
Oh, for every 10 foot.
Yeah, I apologize, yeah, they're like, you can find them up here.
There's one up there, but it's kind of hard to read.
Right, sure. Problem is, you know, it's like, it's a color, it's a color-
It's like a light blue or something?
Yeah, it's a colored file, and then when I, you know, I go to PDQ-
Can you change the color?
They can only print large format, black and white, so I'll try to do color next time.
Well, maybe you could just-
Or make it so it's more bold.
Yeah, that's the answer. And it's just the numbers that need to be bold, and not the lines.
Yeah, so names of the adjoining property owners.
Wait a second, George, you said intervals of two feet?
Well, that's what they're-
They are two feet.
Right, okay.
So adjoining owners.
Right.
Names of adjacent developments. Locations of existing sewers and water drains.
Now, doesn't it get the list of adjoining-
This is different. This is to show on the drawing-
Oh, on the drawing, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's not for the-
Not for the-
-help of notice, no.
Okay.
Existing sewers and drains would be down on DeBois, right?
Yeah, I guess where we tie in, where I'm showing that we would tie in by the pump station-
Right.
Just, I guess, what's there.
Is it because you can't put septic on these lots?
I think it's more to, I don't know if we can't put septic, because my mind's an in-ground, so it's small. I think it was just to not have these large areas of, you know, cut, cutting down areas. And locating the wells, I think, a little simpler. Dorm order detention facilities. My understanding, because of the amount of disturbance, that that's not required, but I guess the village engineer will reply to that.
It's also location of existing, sorry, whether it takes-
Okay.
-places along Henry W.
Okay, sure.
Whatever is there and needs to be located.
Okay, and certification by an engineer, that all the improvements will comply. The next paragraph talks about final plat items, which I believe are pretty much the same items in the previous paragraph. Then the second paragraph after that talks about minimum lot width. And I believe these lots meet that. It is R1, so it would be the 100 feet.
Right.
And they are.
And then about the frontage for driveways being at their flag lots. The requirement for 25 feet, I would like to ask the board if I can ask the fire department chief what were his recommendations. I'd rather not go so wide.
I think you need to-
But I think 25 feet was for all to do, because of the back and forth-
Right.
-your traffic, which is not needed here, but it's just the only reference I could find. I don't think there's anything in our code that says what a single family driveway has to be in terms of frontage, I mean, you know, flag-
Sure.
We define flag pole, and then we don't have any regulations about it, but how wide does the pole need to be on the flag pole? I don't know.
I guess I could see, the only major issue I can see is to make sure that the fire department can get their vehicles down there.
Yeah.
And have a way to turn them around.
That's what I would say.
Sure. So if it'd be okay if I can ask the chief?
Sure. Well, how wide was the private road you put on Caroline Way off Henry W?
That, I believe, the, I don't remember how exactly wide it was, but we did have the fire chief go there, and they pulled the fire truck in on a turn to make sure that they could get in. Had to be a certain radius, so the truck could make the turn. But the width of the driveway is probably 15, 16 feet, I would imagine.
Can't be much more than that.
Does anyone have any thoughts on how wide, or not being too wide, or?
I just had a thought about shared driveways, I suppose. Now, is that, you have, to get the lot, to get the flag lots, you have three poles coming down.
Sure.
But are you really intending to have three driveways side by side?
No, no, it would be a shared driveway.
So you'll have a shared driveway?
Right.
Okay. So the driveway could be any width compared to the width, I mean-
It's just the last one that's going to be constrained.
Right. So it start out as maybe three driveways combined into one, and then split off one, and then split the second one.
Right.
So you build one driveway.
Sure.
So that needs to be shown.
Well, I think it, it does-
Picture shows as a line that's, that could be construed as a separate.
Right, I think it gives the right of, what would you say?
The lines are a little dashed in the middle, isn't it?
But that's the sewer.
That's the sewer.
That's the sheer sewers that are going down the middle of the driveway. If you look off to the right of the property-
Oh, yeah.
-there's an arrow that says 930-foot common driveway, 18 feet wide.
Where's that?
Just to the right of Lot 15.
Up to where it says proposed FDR.
I got it.
Okay, common driveway, 18-foot wide. Oh, so you've got 18-foot driveway.
So is that each of the driveways are going to be 18 feet wide?
Well, they would be combined. It would be one shared driveway that's 18 feet wide.
It's going to be 18 all the way up to the top? All the way up to the left?
That's my question, is it, I mean, all the way up to the top is it 18, or does it start off as 18 and then narrow down?
I would say, it's a good question, because once you get past the second to last house, it's just a-
Right.
-single driveway, so to speak, so.
Yeah, it's short, relatively short at that point, too.
What are we talking about in terms of length there, though? 204? 12 feet for-
Last section, you mean, or?
About 500 to 600? The whole thing is 930, it says.
Yeah, the total length is 930. So the, the shared part, which essentially only three houses are sharing it.
267, yeah. Yeah, I would imagine you're going to run into some issue with being able to test some sort of a turnaround.
Yes, and I think the intention was to have the parking lot at the end to be a turnaround.
Okay.
So I would just-
It's one thing driving the fire truck in, but then you've got to get it out.
Yeah, sure, sure, packing it out's not appropriate. I think what, what happens there, there's like a null. I know the contours are hard to see, but there's a, you know, that driveway has that parking area off there, because it's level.
Right here.
So we would have to design that to make sure they can do what they need to do. Does anyone have any thoughts on what the driveway width needs to be, or?
You know, I mean, obviously, the fire department has to be able to get out of there.
Right.
And after that, you said the code is silent on size?
As far as I can tell.
So... I think it's going to be up to you, Floyd.
I'll talk to you.
Unless, well, the building inspector would just go by the code, right?
Yeah.
I think what the third department needs would be the-
Yeah.
That'll be, that'll be not only the width, but what kind of structure for the driveway.
Because it's heavy trucks.
The structure, so you'd need to tell them that as well, what you're trying to do. I mean, I've seen a lot of problems with just grab a driveway, and the fire department's a problem with that. So when you do the final, this is not the final, so we don't worry about it right now, but when you do the final, you should show the combined driveway out here somehow.
We'll be more specific on-
And the other thing, you're going to need to have a common driveway use agreement-
Right.
-which you'll submit before we do final approval, so I can read that.
Very familiar with that.
Good. Common driveway use in the maintenance agreement.
The next paragraph discusses the EAF that was submitted?
Yes.
And then after that, it refers to a referral from the village board.
Not you, yeah. Okay. Members of the board, any questions or comments? Okay. Rich?
No.
George, you have any?
No.
Okay. Well, Floyd, I think we're in good shape. We have to do a secret designation, and did you do any kind of resolution for this?
No.
You've got to need one for tonight, I guess.
No, just do it like- The new EAF form is more, more explanatory than the other one used to be, so I think you just go through it and fill out the forms, if you have a vote on it, it takes care of it.
Okay.
The short EAF, if you didn't?
Right.
Excellent. Okay, so on page three?
And you have to do it by hand now, they don't have it computerized yet, like the old one.
You mean?
The old one, you can go online and, yeah.
It's supposed to be available, but not yet.
I thought they were available.
The old one was still able to do it, but the new one I wasn't able to get into.
Yeah, sorry. Should give you a discount on the fee.
Do it by hand, yeah, it's tough.
Excellent handwriting, though.
It's like block letters.
Yeah.
Okay, so... We have nine questions here, 11 questions here. So will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use planning or zoning regulation? Conflict with Han, we have typos here, should we tell the state? Okay, with an adopted or zoning regulations. Oh, okay, that's plan, comma, or zoning regi-, okay, I'm sorry, I withdraw my criticism. Yeah. Okay, so we say no to that, correct? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land compared to zoning, right? I mean, it's, it isn't developed yet, so.
Well, it's a change in use of the, yeah. But I would say, the way this is set up is either no or small, or it's medium or large, so. So if it's no or small, I'd say the use of the land is small.
Okay, so it's small is good.
It's within compliance with the R1 zoning district.
Right. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Thanks, Rich. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment, it's critical, no? Proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure from ice transit biking or road walkway? Small. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Maybe. Will proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or waste treatment utilities? Impact?
Small.
Small, because it's filling the whole world, right?
Small is the one I would say. Okay? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important-
You've got two answers in there, right?
Yes, no, no.
Okay.
All right, actually checked, no, small. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological or architectural or aesthetic resources?
Oh.
I hope they don't have any archaeological discoveries there. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, waste products? So we have the federal wetland there, which shouldn't be impacted, except to a small degree, but how do we, the yellow is what for? Well, actually, the impact would be less than if you built it out of, to zoning. Right, right.
Right.
So what it's proposing is less impact.
And also, it pulled back that property line away from the wetland, which-
Right.
Kind of asked for last time, so.
What's, what's the yellow line in the paper?
Oh, that's the essential area for wildlife, it's the limit line.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so that would be no for the natural resources. Will it result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage?
No, small.
Will proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Maybe it's 3.
Okay. So we have determined, based on information listed above, that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You can have the whole packet, and I'll chop it out for that. Okay, so... We have to do a public hearing motion on conditions are what? Do we have to, well, Floyd knows what has to be fixed for that. Do we say anything in the motion to indicate that, or do we just have him show up with everything right? And if not, he has to notice everybody all over again.
If you want to have those changes made for the public hearing, it needs to be done at least five days before the public hearing, which is the public notice deadline, so he could submit a revised preliminary plat.
Can that be done, Floyd?
Depends on when you're setting the hearing, and you just said-
But if we set the hearing for the next meeting, which is two weeks?
You have, you have a week to do it.
Yeah, that's, that took me a week to get to that.
How many have to notice?
We only have to a week, so.
Four weeks, okay.
Yeah, five days is all the notices.
Five calendar days?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you do that?
You got to do the mailing-
Yeah.
And submit a revise.
Mailing the signs, affidavit of-
In fact, it'd be good to get the revised version to the engineer and DPW, because if you put the new information on there, it'll help them.
Sure.
We may not get back an answer from them-
Right.
-in two weeks.
Well, I'll try to get it in the next few days, because Bob's been very responsive lately, like the engineer.
Okay.
And I can, if you want, even just hand deliver it to them.
If we don't get the engineer's response, we just have to wait for it.
Right.
Because you need to-
So we can have the hearing, we just can't-
Yeah, just not closing it.
Close it, sure.
I would be happy to call, and I would be happy to call the engineer to tell him to be expecting it, so maybe they could-
Well, Floyd can do that, too. Right, anyhow, so there, Bob, and there's Blue, right? You have to go to, and fire.
Oh, um, the, who is the village engineer? Are we talking David Bowser, or?
Bob Ruth? Yeah.
Okay.
Bob Ruth. Richard.
Rich.
Rich Ruth.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, I messed you up with Bob James, I'm sorry about that.
Did you say Bob James?
I said Bob, my engineer.
That's it. Okay, so may I have a motion to call a public hearing for our next meeting, which will be the 19th of November, and that's not a conflict with any holidays, right?
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion to- I'm going to have a public hearing regarding this application number- PB130? On November 19th, 7pm. All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
It's PB130.
I think Katie's got that.
Whatever.
Yeah. Okay, Floyd?
And in relationship to Ulster County Planning Department?
We don't have to do it. We're, what's the word, exempt? We're, we're way-
Under, under five lots, and it's not in the flood plain, so it's exempt.
Okay, so I will, I'll make all those changes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Floyd.
Thank you.
Five lots or less, or is it under five?
It's-
We're at five lots, are we not?
Well, we're not creating new lots, actually.
We're not creating any new lots?
Well, there's no net increase, because we're eliminating-
Same number of lots, we're just-
So it's fewer than five lots. So I guess it's four or less, which is the typical distinction between major and minor subdivision. But when it's a lot line adjustment, it's minor.
Okay, Floyd, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, yes?
A little bit easier just to phase this project. Phase it? Phase one, phase two?
And then you have to have the proper data initially to know what you're going to do. I don't think they did know that, I guess.
Just side mark. Okay. Next item on the agenda will be a discussion of the referral from the village board of the local law amending classified type 1 secret- the local law amending classified type one secret actions. And this is the one you got yesterday, I guess.
Yes.
And I got it Friday, and have you had a chance to read George's comments?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any comments about?
Questions in it, huh?
Yeah. There are, you know, I would just like to have a little bit of a preamble here. We've been making many changes to our code in a, I'll call it patchwork way, in that, for example, George mentioned that we added or modified the definition to flag lots, but there are no regulations for it. There's, there's no, so it hasn't been, our code hasn't been updated in a comprehensive way in a very long time, and it's really a mess. And this may be another example of it, but we got this, and this is not a change to zoning law.
Right.
So we don't have a statutory, not obligation, we don't have a statutory right to say anything yea or nay about it, but we can't, they asked us to evaluate it, so we can do that. And I've asked George to give us his opinion of it. And you read it, I can, I can read this, or however you want to do it.
Why do summarize?
Yeah, please, thanks.
I mean, what the law does is, first of all, there's all wetlands as critical environmental areas and wetland buffers, but beyond that, it actually, when you get right down to the language of the change, it, first of all, it says, "All such wetlands, watercourses, and buffers are hereby designated as critical environmental areas." There was one problem in here, in that watercourses were never referred to in the preamble. It was always wetlands, so what watercourses are, these, it's a shame to have to pick at it, but because wetlands, watercourses, and buffers deserve to be protected, but when you don't define them, as the town of New Paltz found out in litigation over and over and over with their wetlands law, you give an open, you give an opening to the other side to challenge it, and, and sort of becomes self-defeating. So it needs to be better defined, but also it seems to say that any activity that'll encroach upon any parcel identified as having a wetland on it somewhere would be designated a critical environmental area. So no matter how small the wetland is and how big the parcel is, the whole parcel would be a critical area, which may be hard to support. In fact, you know, if you have a tenth of an acre wetland in a hundred acre parcel, not too many of them in the village, but still, there's land like that. And so it seems the overkill on, on the, on the definition, although the goal is legitimate. And the whole question too is, why declare them as critical environmental areas? Under the secret regulations, all that does is boost it up to a type one category.
Which we could do now.
Which you can do directly by just saying, "All wetlands and buffers are," any action that impairs a wetland or buffer or affects one would be a type one action. And you don't, and, I mean, to some extent, saying the parcel makes it clear. You don't have to define where exactly the edge of it is, because the whole parcel is a, is a type one action. But it, it is a bit of an overkill to say the whole parcel would make it a type one action. So question of why declare these critical environmental areas, and why it to do is make them all type one actions? They use words like ecologically impact, encroach upon, or ecologically impact, and that is just juicy litigation language.
George, are any of these terms defined anywhere?
No, no, they're not.
They're not defined in, in the seekers, they're not defined by the state, they're not defined by the.
No. That's not a term the state uses. It's a locally made up term. I understand what the point is, but it's not, not defined. And you want to be able to do a type one designation automatically. You don't want to have to determine whether it's going to ecologically impact something. I mean, that's a more complex issue for later on. Type one has to be very clear. And the, they refer to a zoning study as, as the baseline, and any other scientifically, scientific delineation, what does scientific mean? So it's just a number of issues like that that are not well-defined, and, and I think will lead to, if somebody wants to challenge this, and of course, it got challenged in the town repeatedly, if somebody wants to challenge this, it would probably be open to some differing interpretations by the courts. It may not stand up. So I would say that the goal here is to protect wetlands and, and buffer zones, which is absolutely valid and important and essential, and, and should be done, but it's been done in kind of a broad way that has its own internal complications that will make it more difficult than easy. Because I think it can be cleaned up.
Now, in order to proceed in a reasonable way, since we don't have any real say in this, I think it makes sense to give George's recommendations some audience with the village board. So George, do you think it would be okay to just excerpt your comments to us? And send them to the village board and make them, or maybe, what do you folks think about? I see a hand coming, oh. Mr. Chair.
I think that if you wish this to have impact, then I would suggest that the planning board not just exerts George's comments, but that you could say that if this is meant to be useful to the planning board, as well as to other citizens and other agencies of the village, then it needs to be clarified and definitions need to be much more clearly worked out in the law.
Right. Well, I'm not willing to characterize the quality of the stuff that we got, but it, but we think it needs work. And to whatever extent we are authorized or empowered to, to give a recommendation that means something, I would love to. Well, when I was, by excerpting, I mean, excerpt the part of the meeting memo from George, which contains two things, Floyd's thing and this. So I was gonna take out the part, the, the complete text of this, and then ask for a motion to send this to the village board and say that these are some comments that our attorney has made, and we would like them to be addressed.
Okay.
But I wanted to give our board some time to make any other comments or.
So our, our basic argument is that some of these terms are fairly broadly defined, and we need a greater, more, more narrow definition.
Well, in general, it's that. It's that they, they leave ourselves exposed to challenge that would likely be successful because they are so vague, and, and they're, and the approach to declaring a parcel that has some wetland on it, just like that, I mean, George's approach was, I think, well-taken, that, that we say that the, the wetland should be protected, or it should be used to determine its susceptibility rather than the whole parcel. If, if the amount of wetland on the parcel isn't significant, then it's not the parcel that should be protected, it's the wetland itself, yeah.
So I guess the point is, is that the goal is clear, but the verbiage in describing that goal is so muddy that we've lost track of what the goal is.
Well, and as George has said, the town has gone through this several times, and been challenged several times.
And lost.
And lost several times. And, you know, why keep doing this?
Did, did the town ever clean up their language to reduce the challenges?
The town actually has a very good zoning law, wetlands law now. I'm defending it, but it's had a very bad decision in the Supreme Court. It's on appeal now to the appellate division, and will be heard in February next year. But it's, the problem there is a very bad decision. It's actually a well-defined law. So yeah, I put that, even a well-defined law gets attacked. And that one was a very well-written law, very carefully written, got attacked and got a bad judge. Not a bad judge, got, they got a bad decision. Out of a judge. So maybe it'll be reversed on appeal, but the point is that, for whatever reason, there are people who like to attack wetlands laws, and as saying, "It's taking my property." So they need to be written carefully so that they're gonna survive attack. Just the one thing, the critical environmental area is defined in the first part of this. DEC has regulations on this.
Right.
You know, benefit or threat to human health, natural setting, all these criteria that we'd use to determine. And then to say that any lot, any parcel that has a wetland somewhere on it is, is critical environmental, it doesn't meet the definition. It's just not right, that's all. It, if somebody went to challenge that, they'd say, "Well, show me all those features," and you wouldn't be able to show it. You know, if you're 300 feet beyond the wetland, how can you show that it's critical? There may be a wetland like that, there may be a endangered species that, that determines 750 feet in the wetland, that's possible. But you'd make that on a case-by-case determination, and you'd call that a critical environmental area because it's got an unusual salivander or something that's gonna travel, or a turtle that's gonna travel 700 feet. But you wouldn't just, just say all parcels, no matter how large, are endangered or critical, no matter how small the wetland is. So it's that kind of thing, the best intention, but it could be easily improved.
Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir.
May I, Madam Clerk, excuse me, may I ask, on the, handwritten in the upper right-hand corner of this, says July 24th.
Yes, sir.
What does that mean?
That means that that was the night that the village board heard the, the first discussion about this and gave their directions.
And since that moment happened?
One person was directed to, to forward this out to the planning board and the Ulster County Planning Board. That did not happen, and upon review of other information, the mayor asked what was going on, we tracked down the information, and it was determined it hadn't gone to where it was supposed to, now it's gone to where it was supposed to.
When was it sent to Ulster County Planning Board?
This week. Mr. Ariel was assisting in that matter.
So this week, we're meeting tomorrow night.
I know. So it's unlikely that you will hear it, isn't it? So it'll be December before you'll hear it.
Right, okay. Okay, so, wait, are there any questions? Richard, we're done. So may I have a motion to, yes, Mr. Rocko, were you just waving?
No, just scratching the head.
Sometimes a scratch is just a scratch, okay. May I have a motion to submit to the village board our determination, our, can I call it determination even though it's not me?
Our report.
Yes. Our report. We can annex the comments from our attorney concerning this referral and say that they are ours?
So moved.
Second?
What, second?
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll send you the word version, so you can.
That'd be great. Thank you, thank you. And that's, we've got some other things on the other part of the agenda, which includes minutes. Let's take care of 12 Main Street now, that's pretty quick. The applicant for PB 1303, 12 Main Street, withdrew his application a couple of weeks ago. That was to change the two-family house to a bed and breakfast. So may I have a motion to refund his application? Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we fund that. We've got minutes for October 15th meeting. George already gave his comment and email. George, I would like you to stay for a minute, I want to talk about one of the things. Any comments about the draft minutes? John, Louis?
No.
No, okay. May I have a motion to accept the draft minutes for the October 15th? So, second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we're done with the printed agenda. There are two other things, one of which, there was an email conversation initiated by our building inspector, Rich, I'm sorry, I forgot his last name.
Thomas.
Thank you. About amended site plan fees for Woodland Pond and three of their cottages requesting sunrooms. George asked if there was a homeowners association, and there is not, because they're not homeowners, these are all owned by Woodland Pond.
Rentals?
No.
They're a lease, a proprietary type lease. It's, you know, it's a cottage to apartment to nursing to God.
Is there any association? No. You're horrible.
I don't know, but, you know, it's a full-life place.
He didn't use gone in a negative way. Okay, so, it's a normal change of, okay, so I spoke with the, I forgot his name now, the director of site maintenance, I don't know, something like that, the, the chief of the, of the construction and, and he, I, we, I asked him if more, if there are more of these coming, because we were concerned about doing these in a piecemeal way and so on, and he said, "No, this would be it, these three are the last ones," and so on. Now, I don't know that we can take that to the bank, or if it should matter to us, but the question is, what would be a reasonable fee to charge for this? George, you had mentioned something about a supplementary amendment or something like that, where you don't have to amend the entire plan, but just the section that's affected, which is the cottage, these, these three individual cottages, I forgot the term he used, I had never heard it before.
Well, I was just saying, file an amendment, a plan amendment that would just, like, require on these properties, the sunroom, where it's built, and, and not amend the whole plan, so that the, see, just get it down to the size that it actually is, and not judge the fee based on the entire project, but the fee based on what you're changing. And I thought that was legitimate, and so rather than submit a revised whole plan, they would just submit a portion of it, and you could then file that amendment in the same file as the original plan. That's not done all the time, so that your fee would just be based on what you're changing.
Right.
Because otherwise, the fee would be crazy, it would be huge.
Yeah.
To change the whole plan.
Be almost as much as the cost of the construction.
Part of the problem with Woodlands, though, is that when that was designed, some of those buildings come real close to the wetland.
Yeah.
That, that wouldn't, that wetland was a big issue when this was all being done. To all of a sudden go piecemeal adding these.
We're talking about the fee, I don't know whether they should be approved or not.
Well, it's not just a, yeah, well, okay, but.
But that's a separation.
The fee is to build these things.
Well, the fee is just to have the board look at it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the application fee.
Yeah, no, but they want to only present one at a time.
Well, I assume if, if this is, there's three or four, they'd be all in one application.
I think that's the case, but what Richard's saying is that there may be more later, and I don't understand the connection between piecemeal and, I mean, it's gotta be done piecemeal. You have to do it in a way that we consider only those that, that they're- You have to do it in a way that we consider only those that they want to do, or those that they want to change.
Well, we could approve the amended site plan and show that if you want to add on sunrooms and offer these as an amenity to your clients, or whatever you call these people, this is the ground space you have to do it in. You can do it diagonal, you can do rectangle, you can just wear, you can offer them whatever you want, but keep it within these boundaries. You know, keep it this setbacks, keep it this square footage.
Well, that's what we're asking. I mean, it's a SEACER issue, in terms of being able to assess the impact of all the changes.
Right.
But if, what they're saying is, this is it, you really can't push them beyond that.
Right. Now, I don't, you know?
They want to sign off saying that these are the only three they're ever going to build?
Why would we need that? I mean, if they come back in six months and say, "We got two more," what's the harm?
The harm is that we will have a cumulative effect on the wetlands.
On the wetlands.
Being checkerboarded up to a full checkmate.
And the effect?
I mean, this is the group that also, by the way, still hasn't finished the road.
Right. And the effect is that we're making some more impermeable surface?
And runoff.
It may be endangered species or whatever, coming from it, they need to have space. It's all buffer area, I guess, chewing up the buffer area slowly over time.
Okay, so, what do you suggest? What would be a way to approach this?
I mean, their engineers should come back and give us a sketch plan, saying that if we did this to a full buildout, this is what it would be. And then every time they come in for a unit.
How many are there? Let's say there are 15, I don't know.
It's not that many.
Yeah, I have a question regarding full buildout of the cottage, because these things would be additions to the cottage or an extension to all the existing cottages. Are there any cottage sites that have not yet been built that are on the original approved plan?
I don't know, I think there are.
So if you give them a blanket okay, we would then be giving them a blanket okay on cottages not yet built that may further infringe on the wetlands.
But there isn't.
But no, they were just adding to the site plan. If there are cottages that have not yet been built, they are on the site plan, they just haven't been built yet.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
They were just amended, just amended, they have not been built.
So Rich, what you're saying is that we should examine every lot, every cottage, and every proposed cottage, and say, "What is okay to build?"
Yeah, I don't think it's a matter of having to examine every piece. As, to take a look at the whole project in one shot is not going to be much different than looking at three applications. Doing them separately for every one of those cottages, I think one would be more work. I'm not concerned about the amount of work going in as much as we could find ourselves reaching cottage number six and all of a sudden going way out of compliance. Am I signing this?
You know, this is not a good time to do this.
Turn me off there. It's a cumulative effect, you know, that I'm more concerned about. I don't understand why their engineers can take a look at the project and say, "We want to add a..."
Can't the cumulative effect be addressed on the fourth application, with the fourth cottage? I mean, if he's saying that there are three, and that's it, can we take him at his word? And if the fourth one materializes, then we could say, "This is too much, too much impact?"
We could.
I mean, I think we should.
In other words, we would be doing it completely.
Well, you know, I don't know.
That would answer my question. He's got three, and that's it. And in the future, they'd have to come in with a whole new site plan.
What they say, there's no intention to do it.
Right.
Then we can't assume there is, but you can only go by what they're saying, or what they're going to say.
So really, the question is, do we try to get them to give us one that would cover all current and future now, or we wait until they come back after the, or give it to them to say on an individual for those three, and then after they come back, try to enforce the all-current future?
We can do it that way.
What do you think, George?
I think you should have this guy come in and have this discussion. What are they going to do? Maybe it's a pre-application meeting.
I'll ask him to come to the next meeting.
And then to help figure out what the application fee would be. I mean, just come in for a pre-application meeting to talk about it.
Right.
And understand what their intentions are.
Right. What he told me was that there were some units that could not support a sunroom. Many of the occupants of these cottages can't afford anymore. The ones who are having it built have to restore it to the way it was before it was built if they want to sell it and the new person doesn't want it. So it's, I don't understand, I don't understand how it works. I don't get it. But whatever it is, I'd like to figure out some way to deal with it so that we don't force them to apply for 15 or whatever the number is units, if they're only going to do three. And if it means, if the objection to piecemeal means that the cumulative impact would be too much, we can say that the fourth one, if that approaches some sort of a limit that is a problem, then you can't do it. That's it, you can't do it anymore. I mean, I think that's equitable, especially since he's saying that there are only these three, the others. So, okay, so I'll listen to come to the next meeting. Rich wanted to talk about something that I don't understand, the problem that Rich may have with it. There's some?
Well, I think it's disclosure, first of all, that I own one of the properties in this district.
Yeah, so here's the problem. Rich owns some property that is now in floodplain?
It's in the F District.
Right. And he wants to talk about, or he wants us to talk about some change to the zone?
No. I want to change the zoning in that district from the F zoning to the gateway zoning, which is the adjoining zone.
Okay. Now, I have to stop you right here. If you recuse yourself from this, you can't talk to us as a group now about it, is that right, or am I?
No, but he can sit in front as an applicant and ask for this.
Right.
Just, you won't be able to vote on anything, but a member of the planning board can always apply to the planning board for some kind of relief.
Yes.
Full disclosure, sit in the audience and come up in front and ask.
Right, but how does he begin the process of wanting?
Well, he could ask the planning board, the planning board would then make a recommendation or a request to the village board, or he could go to the village board, or either. It can come from either place. And it may be a little bit more hands-off if it went right to the village board.
That's what I would.
This is the thing, this is just me and two other landowners. If they were to make that request, I'd still be in the same position.
Yeah, see, that's to recuse yourself.
Yeah, you'd have to step out for the, if it went to the village board first, it'd come here for a recommendation, and you step away for that and go back. Or if you go to, if you go to this board first, they'd still make the decision without you being involved.
Okay, that being said?
I think you should go to the village board.
Yeah. I think that would be best.
I just think it's a little easier. I think it's sort of, probably just as well like there as you are here.
Well, my argument makes sense, I mean, when I give the argument.
We can consider the merits of the argument when it happens, but I didn't want to have you.
I'm sorry, I just got to see if it's the elections.
Can I turn the machine off? Eight o'clock.
Hold on until now.
Yeah, if the machine breaks down, I'm in charge, it's all right.
So anyhow, I didn't want to have you inadvertently prejudice any member of the planning board by talking to us like this, so I think it would be cleavest if you went to the village board first. And, you know, they'll refer it to us, and then, as George said, you can sit there and heckle us a little.
So how do I get on the next village board?
You have to send a message to the clerk.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I may have a second. I'm going to take Liz's second, because you seconded everyone, I'm getting sick of you seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, George, thank you very much.
You know what your president there did?
Thanks.
Called, and he goes, "Sky."